We'll go ahead and call the order, the Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five, City of Solon Regular Council meeting. Start with roll call. Duncan and Parley are both absent tonight. Gabriel, Eric Kramer?
Yeah.
Why you have?
Here.
Good fudge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world.
We'll look to perfect and approve the agenda. We have Kevin and Johnson County Superbadirad Solon that conflict. So aside from those two items, Kami, any other changes to the agenda tonight?
Um, we know that changes. I'm going to perfect and increase the agenda.
You're welcome.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Why you have?
Yes.
Our civility pledge, we pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, and acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. Takes us to citizens speak. This is the time for anybody that would like to speak on any item or non-agenda items tonight.
Uh, this was brought up at the last city council meeting about the driving speeding. The day afterward, I was coming into Solon for an appointment. And there was a cement truck, and this had happened last year several times. I realized that the people driving the cement trucks are on a schedule. They have to get offloads so that cement doesn't set in their trucks. I also know that they get paid by the jobs. They have to hurry back to get another load so they can, you know, earn their their wages. Okay. But they don't have to be speeding around a residential street thirty to thirty-five miles an hour. This one was coming up. I had just crossed Viking Drive when I saw the cement truck coming at me. There were like three or four cars parked on the east side of the road. I backed, I stopped, backed up, pulled way over to the side to let him speed past. I mean, he showed no signs of slowing down. Those trucks, last year, they were whizzing down the road extremely rapidly. It's not safe for kids or pedestrians or anything. You know, sometime there's going to be a wreck.
I wish to hear the first of March with Donna Kessler to speak about concerns with the contract she signed with the city. Um, after we spoke, I was, we were attacked, I use that word figuratively, by the council. Mr. Parley accused me of manipulating Donna Kessler and kept asking me why her daughter, her power attorney wasn't here. Um, I was taken aback and should have addressed it then. I didn't, but I did see in the minutes that Mr. Parley was quoted as saying I was manipulating her. That's an ugly thing to say, and it's not correct, and I wanted that corrected in the minute. Um, to say that I was here speaking with Donna Kessler at the request of her power attorney, was working that night, and was angry that we didn't get her on the phone speaker because she would have addressed that. As to Donna reading the piece that I wrote for her, I wrote it, but I wrote what she and her daughter, the power of attorney, was on the phone, um, said to me in order to have before the meeting. So I want to make that that clear, that I was not manipulating anyone. I I want to, um, I want to thank Kami and Lauren Whitehead and the mayor for the courtesy of the time that you gave me. This was an important issue to me and many of us in the neighborhood, and you listened to what I had to say, and I appreciate it. And I I do think the issue has been resolved. I do think something good came out of it. Lauren and I had what I considered a fine conversation. We talked about the issue with older people. Many of them kind of on the fringe of names, you get Sullivan, like Donna, um, that we just take for granted that they're comfortable calling council members coming up here and talking and that they have uh, the money for, or hopefully, an attorney. And that this was not an issue of legality or even ethics. It's just, we'll become more aware of some of these, the people in town. We're not Cedar Rapids, we're not Polville, we're not Iowa City. It's the old Solon, where you order your bond and you shake hands and that's a deal. When you're in trouble, everyone shows up at your door and the crop comes in and the women bring a fantastic garland. That's the old Solon. That's what Donna, this family's been here a hundred and fifty years. They've got a centennial farm west of town. Think about that. Her her family's a generation. And she's afraid to come in, so probably never come back. But, um, we, Lauren and I spoke about being aware of when the city does business, um, uh, or interacts with some of these older people, that we're sure there must be a way to come up with doing it properly, that they have legal advice if needed, um, and and that they're comfortable and know the council that they can call you. They have probably landlines, and I think that's the problem except for, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, there's. All right. Uh, next, it takes to us to the consent agenda. So that's the approval of the minutes from the April second, uh, twenty twenty five special meeting and the April second, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Approval of the list of bills, treasures, reports, and transfers, the building prevents, I believe there are three of them that Suzie sent out to us. And then the weekend warrior event. So before we have a motion on that, just want to talk, uh, Mike and Katie are both here with the event tonight. Uh, Mike and I had a chance to meet, I've been a couple of months now, um, just to talk through the event after the success that they had a year ago. But there were some concerns around, uh, safety with the bikers. So I believe it's thirty-six bikers, uh, this year that will be coming into town. Our bike route comes up Main Street. And as they debriefed at the end of the event uh, last year, they thought safety, it was once the bikers got up to Main Street where the cars could be backing out, there were some concerns. And so one of the things that we had discussed, and I had reached out to a few of the council members around that, is could we do a one-year trial where due to the small number of bikers in nature, we can be off of the designated route to see if it enhances safety, does not, uh, negatively impact the neighborhood that it would bike through, and we said, due to such the small number uh, that we thought it would be worth a shot, where it could be, you know, if it were somebody who were doing a a birthday or family bike ride, they may have the same number of bikers. Um, go.
Give you some numbers. The maximum numbers we would ever have is thirty-six. Four-person teams, it would, uh, thirty-six is the maximum we could have on a golf course. Okay. So with that said, I went back last year through the results. We had twenty-six finishing bikers, and they were twenty-eight minutes apart from one to the end. So be no more than one a minute coming up the street. And if it doesn't work out, we're, we'll go right back to what we did last year. But we just think, and one thing that makes it, in our perspective, unsafe coming up Main Street, as soon as they get to this stop sign, they're turning into the road by Big Grove. So it was, uh, yes, last year, of course, we go on Memorial Day weekend, more congestion, but I would like, you know, we want to have the opportunity, hopefully, to try it this year, just coming straight off uh, up up through the residential area, finishing a big row on the south side.
As far as the event.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Just about it. I think the the number was the thing that jumped out to me.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, if you had it, two hundred people come try it differently with that, and I'm sure the residents would as well think with that.
The golf course is our number, you know, nine holes, four per hole, maximum thirty-six and, you know.
Makes sense.
And do you want to just kind of talk about the event itself a little bit more in detail? Sure, we hand it over to Katie as well to talk about the post-event.
We have a, my family has a foundation called the Track Night Foundation, and, um, this is an event we use as a fundraiser for us. And it's going to have a dual purpose this year. We're also, last year, our daughter-in-law, uh, worked at the event out here at Big Grove and sold raffle tickets for the basketball in May and then passed away from cancer in September. So we are going to also, uh, use the proceeds to start a foundation in her name for the Lymphoma Society. So it's going to be, uh, dual purpose, if you will. And, uh, so, uh, anyway, four-person teams on Friday night, one person from the team bowls three games at Colonial Lanes. Uh, then we start Saturday morning, um, early, golfing, uh, the second team member with golf night bowls of saddleback. And then we, uh, all meet at the Solon Middle School. And, uh, at about ten o'clock, one person will start running the five K on the Hoover Trail. Uh, and we've got that all permit from Johnson County and the D DNR for, uh, Hoover Trail from SRNA up to Ely and back. So then right after the, after the runners get off of the trail that goes around the ball fields and onto the limestone trail, then we start the bikers one at a time. About, last year, we were about sixty yards apart. And, uh, they go to the SRNA to Ely and back and finish it at Big Grove. And, um, we had a, you know, an award ceremony and a post-race party. We were all we were all done with our part of giving weekend worry by two o'clock. And that's what we expect this year for our end of it, you know, uh, Big Grove wants anything beyond that. That's, you know, their business, but we you know, it's going to be a long day for a lot of us, and we want to be done at two and and, uh, as soon as possible. But we expect, uh, bikers, which will be the fourth and final leg, to start, uh, showing up here at Big Grove by eleven and everybody done by twelve. There's a funny event. It's, uh, it's, you would expect half of the people in it are, uh, in it with the hopes of finishing alive, and the other half are in for blood. You know, it's fun. You know, some people are like, hey, I made it in, great. The other people are mad because they didn't bike it, just run as fast as they thought. But, you know, it's, uh, it's good. It worked out great for us. And now with with Casey passing, we got, uh, uh, some more things we want to accomplish with it.
All right. Kami, do you want to touch on just the Big Grove, the event application?
Yeah, so we just, uh, like we normally do, we submitted an application. We'd like to close down from the corner where the entrance of Big Grove is on, um, Iowa Street all the way to the alley. So it wouldn't really obstruct traffic. They would have to go through the alley or the parking lot. We would take up the first row of parking in the, um, kind of business parking lot across from us on the east side. And we plan to start setting up around six in the morning. Uh, volunteers would be, you know, around setting up, and then we would be tearing down by three P M.
You just reach out to me when you know what you need for barricades and such.
Oh, yeah, we already, uh, we have barricades. We'll need just the street closure signs. Um, but otherwise, we'll have the barricades rented and we'll have corn potties and, um, we'll have fully cleaned up and hopefully everything will be back open by three P M.
And the hope is to have, uh, women's basketball players again. Well, we had, uh, two last year, and Hannah Stolkey and Colleen Fierbach, now with the, uh, NIL changing the whole landscape since then. Uh, because we requested to have some of the freshmen off the team that were very good and very popular, and not sure how that's going to shake out, who we're going to get, but, uh, they're still working on it. So hopefully, we'll have some basketball players that are kids love to eat Hawkeyes, whether they're the Little Basketball or whoever it is, so. And we'll have kids' games out there every now and then as well.
That, do we have a motion to consent the agenda?
I'll second.
Consent the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Why you have?
Yes.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yes.
It takes us to the public director report.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh, um, just give me a quick update. We are still working on the, with the insurance company on the well-free, um, uh, repairs. Uh, repairs are completely done. There was a period of about two weeks where, uh, water was stirred up a bit. So if you had any complaints or had some, um, tinged water, water, that's why, but things are on track now. Um, so I talked to the insurance company last week, and they just needed one more bit of information, which Dave was able to get, and I passed that along. So we're hoping that, you know, a good portion of the, uh, cost is covered by the insurance. Sledge hauling has been happening this week. What else?
They're supposed to finish up today, so hopefully this simmy is off Main Street now.
And, uh, what else, Chris?
Well, restaurants are open. Well, they're cleaning up maintenance still, but they're open very, very season.
And, uh, these have been the the staff have really taken time to really do a real nice refresh on the bathroom, replacing some of the dividers and stuff. So it's just time. Um, so, um, place some toilets and uh, just, just not your, not your usual unlock the doors that are open, just really a nice, a nice upgrade and refresh for those to start the season. That's, that's a big job. And we're short staff, so, so thank you very much.
Uh, city engineering board data.
Yeah, we got contracts sent out to, uh, the contractor of Prager's Lane. I hope we get those back. You have a pretty long schedule here shortly. Trail Ridge Part Three, they're still working on the sewer out there, about half done on it, and they'll start working on each form sewer. Uh, been doing pretty good. Harvest Acres, we met and, uh, met with the systems, our interim county engineer, had some discussion about Iowa Street, how that wraps into the, the road way that they'll like. I think the highway one, uh, wanted to get that all sorted out and we'll go forward with the miller. So we ended up a good meeting there. Uh, Big Bright Point, we had a good meeting with them on connection to gallery, there's water. Kami and I are working on the checklist for any other applications that come in. And we'll get that completed to them so that we can make sure we have everything we need and bring that to council. And the school site plan has come in, and we're doing that. That's for the, uh, west side. You can see something on the main parking lot following that. They've spoken to them too, so we didn't have one part of it. That might be a little more complicated. Hold on to the rest of it. And, uh, the wastewater plant, we'll talk about here later in the agenda.
All right, thanks, Dave. All right, that takes us down to the proclamation. Uh, you don't say a few words before?
Tell a few things. It's, um, sexual assault awareness month, which is why I'm here. Um, last fall, RVAP, uh, integrated with DVIP, so it's now the domestic violence prevention program and the rape victim advocacy advocacy program. So it's a mouthful to say, but we're hopefully going to change the title of our organization in in due time. Um, we have doubled in size since we took on the sexual assault side of things, um, and also opened a new shelter at the same time. And so, um, we're able to house twice as many families and victim survivors as we were before. So we have seventy beds. Um, we also have, um, animal sheltering, which is one of the only animal shelters for victim service, victim survivors in the state. Um, we, we have, um, ten puppies born today. So much. Um, last weekend, we had shop for survivors in Iowa City, and I know that it's going on in a few other counties today. Um, and we raised over forty-six thousand dollars, um, of merchandise, food and diapers and formula and all of that good stuff. Um, we, let's see, we also are starting support groups in all of our counties. And so Johnson County's, um, begins next week, and it will be held at the, um, library, and then we'll do it for Washington County as well. So I'll put up some flyers on bulletin boards and it'll show you how to register for that if you have anyone you might know who would want to join. Um, we have another event coming up this week on campus in Iowa City. Um, actually, no, it's next week, the Clothesline Project and Take Back the Night Rally. So the, um, students have been getting together at our Women's Rights Action Center for the last few weeks, and have been, um, making T-shirts in response to domestic violence and sexual assault victim survivors. And then they hang them up and place them on campus and walk through, and we have table and all that stuff that goes on as well. That's it.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll read, uh, proclamation. It's Sexual Assault Awareness Month, uh, April twenty twenty-five. Whereas sexual abuse, sexual violence, and stalking affect anyone, including children, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm. Whereas every sixty-eight seconds, an American is sexually assaulted, and every nine minutes, that victim is a child. Whereas approximately seventy percent of people affected by rape or sexual assault experience moderate to severe distress, a larger percentage than for any other violent crime. Whereas sexual violence in rural communities exists as a hidden asylum and often unrecognized crime that is often underreported. It's widespread and affects every community member. And whereas through the inspiration, courage, and resilience of people affected by sexual violence, our communities are learning to better respond to the life-changing impact of sexual violence on individuals through systems and in the community. And whereas DVIP and RVAP has worked to end violence and abuse for more than forty-five years through the collaborative partnerships of staff, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens. And whereas our community's achievements should be commended, and we must continue our commitment to respect and support those affected by sexual violence and to prevent future violence in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the City of Solon, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-five to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Solon, Iowa, and urge all people to work together to eliminate sexual violence, sexual abuse, and stalking in the market we meet, signed this sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-five, in Solon, Iowa.
Thank you so much.
Takes us into our new business. Uh, I have thirteen new wastewater treatment facility options. I'm going to over.
All right, I think Kim is going to put this up on the main screen so we can see it. Get fifty minutes. But I thought it was interesting that in the Public Works Report, we talked about replacing some of the facilities in the bathroom and hauling sludge, the front end and the back end of what we're going.
Never ending battle.
Talking about what happens in the middle. Okay, go to the next one. So, uh, we put together an anti-degradation analysis, and that's something that we have to put together when we are looking at any wastewater facility or improvements to the wastewater facility. Because anytime we change that, you know, where it's going to discharge, how much it's going to treat, uh, it affects our discharge permit. And if we increase what we're asking for more into the receiving stream, that has a potential to have an impact on that stream. So we have to do a report that looks at those impacts. And we started at the top end. Uh, the reason that we're looking at doing something new is that the existing facility, you can see in the blue box on the left, is, uh, taking up quite a bit of the space that we have. And when we look at the houses that surround that, uh, we have to make sure that we stay a thousand foot or ninety percent of distance of the existing facility from those houses. And that really pinches us in that a lot of those, uh, this separation distance requirements fall inside of that blue box. And you can see we've already got quite a bit in there. Uh, we, we have a hard time packing in new stuff or even working around what's there without impacting that. Um, this facility doesn't have a lot of the things we're going to talk about. But you can see on the right, uh, the the oxidation ditches in the lower corner, uh, that's the process that we have now. It's a pretty robust and stable process. Um, everything comes in, it has a lot of volume. So you don't have a lot of instability with that. It can handle the variations in the flow and the process still works pretty well. And I'm sure they appreciate that stability, because you're not reacting to every little change in flow we're loading. Uh, up on the top right, you'll see that's the lift station. And if you ever go down there and want to really understand why we need to make some of these improvements, and you see what happens at that place. We don't have screening there. We have a basket that catches stuff that comes in. And, uh, there are pumps that grind it up and send it into those ditches, which creates a problem for us from a maintenance standpoint. So we need to do something a little bit different in the new process in trying to work within this area. Or what we need to do in the near term as well is when we look at what's going to happen in the future, we're very limited, and at some point, we need to make that step where we move the facility. And the longer we wait, the inflation, everything else, the more we're going to have to do the larger facility in the future. So a lot of these things played into the decision on what we're going to do next. So Kami, if you go to the next slide. The growth area, this is on our future land use map. So we've got the red dash line on the inside. That's a mile. The green line is two miles outside the current city limits. The green with the small star is the area that we conserve by gravity with the current plant. There are two creeks that are both called Mill Creek that that, uh, split off, and we have one branch of that. And that north trunk sewer that we did a few years back, that was sized to be able to handle a lot of that green area going out beyond the golf course, uh, outside the road, that area. As we get to the south, Jordan Creek is a different basin. It's hard to get to where we are from gravity any further south because of the topography dropping off in the sewer. It just isn't going to do that. So that green area is what we're able to capture. If we move to our preferred location, which is the Menape property that we purchased not too long ago, that big red star, that opens up that red area, which is the other branch of Mill Creek that we conserve by gravity. So we, we look at the future growth area, and we look at where growth is happening now. This plant shifting to the west opens that up so that we can eliminate that that brown or orange shaded area with the big star. If you look at Old Mill Creek on the west side, they have a lift station. If you look at Trail Ridge, they have a lift station there as well. If we're beyond what we conserve by gravity, by moving over here, we can abandon those lift stations and bring everything in in addition to that red area. So when we look at the future growth, that's what we're talking about. And Kami, go to the next slide, please. The new facility location, as I said, is the big red star down there, and you can see the blue box with the existing. So we're shifting west, and this other creek is what I'm talking about. That will be a new area that will serve by gravity. The lift station that's here will be able to run down to the new plant. So the location that we selected opens us up quite a bit. Uh, as we get south and go to Jordan Creek, that's going to require a lift station regardless, and that'll, that'll be a future discussion that we'll have to get into. But where we're, what we're proposing to put this is pretty close. There's not a lot of distance, and we have to pump to that, and it works out well, um, with the path. The, uh, the current site is just an open field, as you can see on the upper right. So it's a blank slate for us. We can lay things out pretty much however we want, without boxed in like we are at that existing facility. Next slide, please. So the design criteria, when we look at this, uh, the top one is the population. Uh, we're looking at a new plant with a capacity to be able to serve ten thousand people. And when we look at growth rates for other communities, tip in a north liberty, that we're in the same type of growth pattern that we are, where we went from, uh, under two thousand people to about thirty-five hundred in in the relatively near term. Uh, on that trajectory, and given the the amount of interest that we have, we rejected aggressively. So that ten thousand, uh, that that's a pretty big number, and it's hard to imagine Solon at ten thousand. But if you look at the growth rate in twenty years, we could be there. So we don't want to undershoot and put this money in and then have another project that comes up while we're still paying off the loans. We want to make sure that we build as big enough to be able to serve our needs. The, uh, the box that has the yellow, or the old box there, uh, the average wet weather. If you look at that, that's usually what DNR looks at for our plant capacity standpoint. If you look at the existing, and when we're running these numbers in twenty twenty-three, we're pretty close to that. That point seven zero three is above what the existing plant is rated at just slightly. So we're right at that point where we're, we're reaching the capacity of that facility. Uh, the new plant capacity will be almost double that. So we're, uh, we're projecting, uh, with with the other numbers on here, these are all criteria we have to look at, um, as far as being able to meet, um, the the B O D or the biological oxygen demand. Um, that has a thirty-day, uh, there's a test that you do for that to run the numbers, but we're looking at, um, the existing loans are four fifty-seven, and we're going to be well above that with the facility. So it'll have a lot of capacity. Um, the other numbers that are on there are things that are going to be in our permit. That's, uh, that yellow box, again, the new plant capacity, that one point three six. Being above one puts us in a category where we have to go through and do what's called a nutrient reduction strategy. We're going to be held to the certain limits. Uh, anybody over one M G D has to be, uh, looking at test from a nitrogen and phosphorus standpoint. So when we're looking at a plant of this size, we have to take those into consideration. Our plant has the ability to do some biological uh, removal of those, uh, compounds. So something else that we, we need to keep in mind as we design for this type of facility. Uh, go to the next slide, please, Kim. We, we looked at, uh, several alternatives, and some of these, we have to look at what's called a non-degrading alternative. And in essence, what we're trying to do is if we add more flow, we want to be able to treat that in a manner that it doesn't change what our current, um, discharge limits are. Well, one of those is recycle or reuse. Um, that's a non-degrading alternative. The second is land application, where we would just take anything above what we can treat and we would just apply um, to the ground. And then the third one is the regional treatment, where we'd be talking about putting in a large station or some way to get it to another facility that has capacity, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City. Those three, we, we have to look at them, but they're not viable. Uh, they're, they're just, uh, things that we have to go through the process and put a number to. So if you go to the next slide, those three are crossed off because, uh, when we did our diligence, we looked at them, but we're not going to consider them. So we're left with three alternatives. Uh, the first one is an aeromind treatment facility, which is our base, uh, control alternative, or the the least expensive of the three that we looked at. The next is a, what's called a carousel treatment facility, and that's similar to our current oxidation ditches. A little bit different setup, and it's called Carousel because of the company that, uh, that makes that. And the last one is that same process, but with flow equalization at the existing wastewater plants. We keep some of those ditches and tanks that are there, and we keep that motivation. And if we get a high flow, rather than having And we keep that motivation. And if we get a high flow, rather than having to overdesign the plant, we can store some of that there, and then when the flow receives, then we can run it through our new facility. So I'm always going to talk a little bit about each one of those and ways with our company. She was involved in the previous upgrade where we put the new oxidation ditch in and did some of the clarifiers. So she's been with the company for twenty years. And very familiar with Solon and her role at our company as water and wastewater design engineer. So she's she's been helping me with this, has a pretty good background on doing a lot of facilities in Eastern Iowa and has been involved in our most recent carousel in Eastern Iowa in Corahville, so.
So, yes, thanks, Dave. Yeah, it was one of my, the current plant was one of my very first projects when I started out. So I'm very familiar with Solon and I've been helping Dave throughout the years on various projects in the back row. So I guess, Kimmy, if you want to go to the next slide there. Those three that were remaining alternatives, they're all versions of a mechanical plant. So I wanted briefly just go through kind of what mechanical plant is and then what we're adding as part of this upgrade in all that's common to all of the options. So up there, you can kind of see it's a really basic plant, but it starts with screening and grit removal where the flow comes in, goes to aeration basins, clarifiers. And then the water part gets separated from the solids at that point. The water goes to ultraviolet disinfection. The solids that come off the plant go to digesters and bio solids processing. And then ultimately land application is usually what we do in Iowa. So all of our mechanical plants that we're looking at as alternatives are going to include, as Dave mentioned, a screen and grit removal. That's new to Solon's mechanical plant process. And then also on the backside, the UV disinfection is new. Solon right now does coronation, de-coronation. So there's chemical costs involved and stuff. Most plants have moved away from that, and ultraviolet disinfection is the way that we accomplish the required disinfection. Much simpler and easier for you guys to operate and lower cost ultimately and safer without the chemical handling. So those are going to be in all of the options we look at. Where we're really playing a little bit more is with that aeration basin clarifier solids handling concept. So, Kimmy, if you want to go to the next slide. The alternative for aeromod treatment facility layout, we kind of laid that out on the site for you, the existing site, so you can kind of get a feel for the space utilization and also that we have been looking at future build out so that there is room for expansion, even though that feels like it's forever away, it'll come up. So on an aeromod, the advantage of that system is that it kind of brings the aeration basins, the clarifiers, and the digesters all into one very big tank. So we've kind of blown up the tank there on the side for you. And then from there, there's some solids handling that comes off of that. But that's really the main concept, the advantage there, of course, is common wall construction and but it is a different process. It's a unique process. And so there isn't as much familiarity with staff with that process and also it works well. I mean, Tiffin, some surrounding communities have it. We just feel like the well, the next alternative is the carousel process. We feel like that one might be a little bit better. It's a little more suited towards Solon's existing process. And so if you want to look to the next slide. Oh, and the cost, of course, is a concern. Here, we're looking at an estimated construction cost of roughly twenty nine million. And total project cost, when you figure in engineering, also said construction contingency of thirty six million roughly. And all of the costs of the alternatives that are presented are not significantly different. There's just not a lot of efficiencies to be had when you need to include all of those same processes. It's just variations on those processes. So if Kimmy can go to the next slide. Alternative five, the carousel treatment facility. This is probably similar to the existing facility in operation. It does have some components that allow it to handle, do a little bit more of the biological nutrient removal we're talking about. There may be some chemical polishing that has to occur as well. That's due to the composition of Solon wastewater and the way the process works. So we will be incorporating that into our design as well. But there you can see the aeration basins are kind of the similar shape anyway to the existing plant. And then it does have separate clarifiers and then aerobic digesters, which aren't pictured, but the clarifiers there are pictured. And that concept, as you mentioned, Corahville has it, and we've done site visits with staff on all the different options that are presented here to get feedback as well. And that system has worked very well. It doesn't involve a lot of blowers and other equipment. It's kind of unique in that it operates with a vertical impeller to add the air. And that gives it some advantages over the aeromod that had air that has blowers and is blown in, and you have to do a lot of valving and different things. If you want to go to the next slide. The treatment facility cost for the carousel pretty similar. It's all slightly more expensive because you are losing some of that advantage of the common wall construction. And the estimated construction cost there is twenty nine point six million with the total estimated project cost being around thirty six point five million. And we can, if anyone really wants to break it down, we can go further, but I think that probably that's good enough for this discussion. The final alternative that we looked at, if you want to roll forward, is alternative six, which is really just that carousel treatment facility with flow equalization at the existing plant. What we're planning to do there would be to utilize the existing lift station and the tankages there with a little bit of piping modification. And basically allow that peak flow that we get, because the plant is designed for thirty days of average wet weather, so what is thirty day period. But individually, on some days, you're going to have significantly more flow, a maximum day, and then you also have to look at a peak hour flow. If we can shave some of that off, the advantage is that you're not processing all of that through the plant, so you can downsize some of the equipment a little bit. It's not huge savings on the equipment size, but it does give you more flexibility to operate that plan a little differently and also to pull a little bit more. And potentially one of the challenges on the Solon's current plant is that there isn't a great measurement of a true peak flow. When they get a lot of water, it's pretty hard to estimate. They have a meter, but you know. So the peak hour is a little bit of a guesstimate, too, and this would allow some flexibility and protection on that plant. So you can store that off to the side. When the flows subside, you bring it back into the plant for treatment. Because those peaks don't happen. I mean, when they happen, it's, you know, maybe a day. The peak hour is even less, obviously, because it's just the peak hour. And you should regain that capacity pretty quickly and allow them to just take a little bit off. And so we feel like the advantage that this particular alternative gives you is you have that extra flexibility and protection. If there was ever, I don't know, a big event that maybe somebody dumped something they shouldn't do, you can again divert flow and protect your plant. So it really or if you want to roll to that next slide, Kimmy. For a small increase in cost, I think there we've gone to twenty nine point nine million. So, you know, four hundred thousand, which I know is still a big number, but in proportion is not a huge increase. You get that added flexibility and protection at the plant. So if you want to roll to the next slide, Kimmy. We, as part of this analysis, are recommending the carousel treatment facility with the flow equalization. All the alternatives meet the standards and provide nutrient removal of some sort. But, which is the nitrogen of ten milligrams per liter, phosphorus one milligram per liter. But this one carries the added advantages of being similar to the current facility treatment. It adds the screenings, the grit removal, nutrient removal, and some improvements in solids handling. And then also allows that peak flow reduction for a bigger flow range and more flexibility. And then this new site obviously allows for expansion significantly better than the current site does. One, one thing I wanted to cover too, one of the things that when we do the anti degradation analysis that they require us to look at is if we're getting less degradation, that is considered something we have to look at. And if it's at a minimal cost increase, would be required to provide the better treatment at that minimal cost. In this case, the cost is, as a percentage, is very small. So when we look at that as this being a less degrading alternative, the city of Solon under the process that EPA and DNR requires would be required to do that slightly more expensive process. So that is another reason we've recommended this. And then finally, if you want to roll to the next slide. We just did a little project timeline summary for you. Could have been a little bigger, I guess. Sorry about that. But kind of our next steps would be, right now, we're in the public comment period for this anti degradation alternatives analysis. That should be wrapping up here shortly. Any comments we get, we would incorporate into our final report. That would go to the DNR for approval. And then from there, once that's approved, we can actually submit a facility plan, which looks at more than just what we've covered here. And then proceed. Once that facility plan is submitted, we can also move forward with potential funding options and get approval and then roll into design for this project and anticipated right now, with the way the schedule is laid out, design or I'm sorry, bidding would be occurring in February of twenty twenty seven, which is feels like a long ways away, but will come up fast. And then the facility is intended to be completed by June of twenty twenty nine. So it's a very long process, but it'll go really quickly.
No more slides?
No, I think that's it.
As far as discussion tonight, do we need to select an option tonight? As far as moving forward, there's just all the different options available that we have and gaining additional information on each.
This is part of that anti dig process is this report, the public hearing that's gone out around the, to the various agencies around the state. We also have two public information sessions scheduled for June. One's going to be on Saturday, and one's going to be on an evening on Zoom, on Zoom. And then the Saturday one will be in person so that people can have a chance to come in and go sit through this presentation and also have asked questions that they might have. Now, this is a big project for this community, biggest project we'll probably ever undertake as a city. So so I want to make sure the public had an opportunity to have time to ask questions. So we'll work on promoting those sessions so people know that they have the opportunity. Also, I've been working with Heidi Cool. She has the updated projected costs. We didn't have those. We were working on a little lower number. Suzie and I have been gathering meter information for her, so she is working on that. We hope to have at least preliminary information for the council by June first, as far as an updated financing plan for the new project, for the surplus land project. It's our target date.
Very thorough tonight. Thank you. Takes us to item fourteen, or is it twenty five nineteen, the street closure? And this is for the weekend warrior event that we discussed earlier on that.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty five nineteen.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Hi. Takes us to other business. So maybe a bit of that, Kimmy, do you want to run us through?
Yeah, I sure can. So we'll start with the Streets Committee. I have not coordinated with John and Andrew yet, but I will in the next few weeks to look at those old areas in Old Mill Creek. Also, as David mentioned, we have a site plan for the West Parking Lot for Lakeview and we have, there's an opportunity for the city to participate in a steep, a deep study with the state and the intersection of Chavel and Highway three eighty two may be eligible. So I'm meeting with them tomorrow to see if that's an option. One of the things that we had shared is with the, with the schools engineer is that you know, what they're planning to do, they can move ahead with their site plans for that, for that east parking lot, but we want to continue to do some further evaluation just to make sure we're coming up with the best plan. I think we have a good preliminary plan of how the road in Chavel is going to extend. But we just want some additional information and we, this is a grant that would, it's an engineering grant, that they would do kind of that, that next level review of the area, just to make sure what we've discussed preliminary with the school, you know, makes sense and is a good plan from an engineering standpoint. So more on that, and then I'll share that with the Streets Committee once I have a little bit better idea what that, what that is and what's all involved in that. I also wanted to we're working, working on a list of street repairs, not, not major replace, street replacement, just places of repairs that, you know, need some attention throughout town. So we'll be working on that. That's typically just consider maintenance and then here next month, we'll get with the Streets Committee and take a little deeper look at curb and gutter and kind of see where we want to go. And that typically is work done after beef days, but we like to get it lined up and planned as soon as possible in the spring. That's all I got on Streets Committee. Utilities Committee, as Dave mentioned, we've been in conversation with the Bright Point, who want to hook up to the Gallery Acres. We just got their final updated plans. I'll send that out to the Utilities Committee so that they at least can have an idea. We want the Utilities Committee to just do the deeper review and work on that before we bring it to council. Also, Scott had been working on a water tower maintenance program. So I got some information on that that I'm going to also be sharing with the Utilities Committee that I think has some promise. Personnel, we're working on some job openings and also just keeping the Public Works transition plan flowing for the, for the moment. Suzie and I are going to be reviewing the applications for the finance clerk, and then we'll bring, we'll do the first rounds, and then we'll bring the personnel and committee for the final rounds. Last thing I have on committees is the SRA twenty eight E agreement. Everyone who's on the committee has it. They're in the process of reviewing it. I've heard some feedback, but I'm still waiting for, you know, formal feedback. I think we're probably going to need to meet real quick before we send the comments back to the school. One of the items on there is the high school football or the high school baseball lights, and I'm working with Alliant on that. So I think we're coming up with a plan, and we will likely meet with Brian Heitzes with the school and kind of figure out our game plan. So overall, we got a lot of things going, a lot of things in the works for spring. That's all I got on committees.
All right, thanks, Kim. City clerk, of course, Susan, even. All right, Kimmy, any comments?
I just wanted to, two reminders. One, we will have that special meeting next Wednesday at five thirty to approve FY twenty six budget. And then we, because we got the West Parking Lot site plan, there will be a planning and zoning meeting on the last Tuesday of the month to review that. Those are the kind of the items I have.
Any comments?
Just want to thank David for such a thorough analysis, David and his team for such a thorough analysis on the, on the super plan. Much appreciated. And continue with thanks to Public Works for all the great work that they've been doing and keeping things going as they are.
Mayor comments? I don't, Kimmy and Cassie don't know which hat you're wearing, if you're wearing Citizen or School hat tonight, but if you're on behalf of us into the school, just appreciate the collaboration, both the twenty eight E with parking lot, all that with the conversation. So appreciate that. Not sure which hat you're wearing tonight, but if you could relay that back to. If you could relay that back to the school, and then same thing as Cole mentioned with the project, so. Chris and Nate, nice, thanks for the carpet repairs today that you sent Karen, Dave, helping with the well, and. It sounds like Ryan's wrapping up the sand volleyball courts as well, so a lot of stuff going on with that, really appreciate everything you guys are doing as we try to ramp up the staffing on that. Obviously, that's all I have, do we have a motion to adjourn tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All favors, Sam?
Aye.
You oppose?